Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 5th, 2010 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission, which I'll call to order at this time, with Quorum being present. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of April 7th and April 21st, 2010. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have six public hearings that we're going to conduct this evening, the first of which is a zoning change request to rezone approximately three acres from RS-15 to Commercial Fringe, located along Franklin Road and Moreland Lane, Family Worship Center developer. Ms. Ealy, good evening.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chairman Lamb, Planning Commission members, and glad to see you. Happy Cinco de Mayo. The first public hearing tonight is to consider rezoning approximately 3.25 acres of property that's a portion of property owned by the Family Worship Center. The property is shown on the map on the screen, and it's shaded orange. It's along the south side of Franklin Road or Highway 96, just east of Moreland Lane. The Planning Commission has seen a site plan for the church on this property about a year and a half ago, so the site should be familiar to you. The location of the church is just south of the area shaded orange. Also, a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals has seen this property before because the church has been granted a special use permit to operate in an RS-15 zone. The request tonight is for you to rezone the property to CF, which is Commercial Fringe District. The four properties on the opposite corner of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road are also zoned CF. The properties to the north and to the west are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County and are zoned R-15. And the adjacent property to the east is zoned RS-15, and that's an interim zoning. The CF zone stands for Commercial Fringe District, and it allows commercial uses but excludes those more intensive uses that are associated with the CH zone, highly commercial zone. The CF district would require a type D buffer, which is a minimum 15 feet wide between the adjacent RS-15 zoned properties. And also, the CF district regulates the placement of drive-up windows, dumpsters and garbage collection area, the sale and distribution of fuels, and site lighting as to minimize impact on adjacent single-family properties. The applicant feels that the CF zone will permit a number of commercial uses for this property that would be appropriate, but may eliminate those more heavily concentrated commercial uses that you may see closer to the intersection of or closer to the ramp for I-24. That area is currently zoned CH. So the request before you is to zone this property 3.25 acres from RS-15 to CF. This was published in the newspaper, and we did mail mailouts to the property owners within 250 feet. I'm not sure if a representative of the applicant is here this evening, but Dan Hilliard has been bringing the application forward. If you have any questions, staff will be able to answer them either before or after the public hearing. If you have no questions at this time, I suggest that you hold a public hearing.
Okay. If there's nobody here representing the developer, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Before I open the public hearing, I'd like to go over briefly the rules we conduct our public hearings by, in case you've not been here. If you'd like to speak either for or against this proposal, we'd like you to come forward to the microphone after we open the public hearing. Please state your name into the microphone and give your address. Limit your comments to no more than three minutes, if you would please, so everybody will have a chance to talk. Make all your comments and questions to the Planning Commission directly. If you do have questions, we'll make note of them and ask the staff to answer those questions at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Hi. My name is Luzendo Hernandez, and I purchased a lot, it's a vacant lot, and it's right next from dental facility on, what's that, Olive Street, Leaf Street, I'm sorry. And I would like to be taken into consideration to rezone it. It's a residential lot, and it's 100 by 100 frontage by 140 depth, and I would like to include it in the rezoning for commercial.
Okay. Thanks, sir. What will happen on that is you'll need to get with the staff and talk to them about the application for rezoning in that regard, and they would be glad to guide you on their procedure.
Excuse me, Chairman Lamb.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
I think he's speaking about an item on one of the next public hearings. I think he's mixed up.
Okay.
Lee Street will be the subject of the number D. So you'll have another opportunity to speak on item D on the agenda, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
I did speak to Mr. Hernandez this morning, and he is unfamiliar with our process, and so I tried to guide him through. I think maybe he's just mistaken.
Thank you. You did a good job. Anybody else? Nobody's coming forward. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Any questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission?
No questions, Chairman Lamb. I'll move ahead.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next item up tonight is the zoning change request to rezone 51.9 acres from PUD to PRD and amend the Blackman Farms PRD to include the subject property located along Franklin Road, south of Braxton Drive. Polty Homes and Leon Peoples are the developers. Ms. Ealy.
Thank you again. This next public hearing is to consider rezoning approximately 51.9 acres from its current PUD zone, Planned Unit District Zone, to PRD, Planned Residential District. If you refer to the map, you'll see that there are two areas that are shaded different colors. The area shaded orange is the Hillwood Development, and this 51.9 acres is a part of that Hillwood Development. The 51.9 acres is the hatched area on this orange shaded property. The adjacent property is shaded blue, and that's the Blackman Farm PRD, Planned Residential District Community. So I'd like for you to familiarize yourself with the properties, because essentially what this request is, is to remove the hatched orange area from the Hillwood PUD and add it to the blue area, which is zone PRD. The developers of Blackman Farm are currently building houses, and they feel that this is a successful community, and that they have an opportunity to expand to the east and add to that development. Included in your agenda materials is a program book which outlines their plan as proposed, and that will become the zoning if you do decide to approve this. Currently, that hatched area is approved for 219 single-family lots. The applicant is not requesting to change that number of lots. They're not requesting to increase it or decrease it. They want to keep that at 219 units. I've also included in the staff comments a chart that shows the differences between the Blackman Farm community and the Hillwood community, and basically you can see that the differences are very small. The house type that will be in this area will be exactly like what you see in Blackman Farms. So if you drive through Blackman Farms and you see those house types, that's what you're going to see in the shaded area if you approve the plan as proposed. The biggest difference is the driveways will be larger. Mr. Randy Caldwell is here this evening. He's standing in for Mr. Thompson, who I think has presented this item to us before. I'm going to invite Mr. Caldwell to the microphone to present this to you. If you have any questions, either after his comments or after the public hearing, staff is prepared to answer them. Mr. Caldwell?
Mr. Caldwell, welcome.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Let's see, I've got to get to a PowerPoint here, but appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. But as Marcus said, we are requesting basically to add a portion of what was the Hillwood PUD to the Blackman Farm community there, and we can get to our, back to the, there we go. I've got a couple exhibits that will hopefully give you some indication here, and I'll have to get the full slideshow on here, Marcus. Or just go slideshow? Okay. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Let's see how I move this forward then. What you have up on the exhibit there is an aerial that was taken in '09 that shows basically where the Blackman Farm community stands, close to when it's built out. And that's a little bit farther along. You kind of see the Hillwood Development to the south, where you see the existing apartment complex that's being built, and the big green area is the area that we're talking about adding to the Blackman Farm community. I keep hitting the wrong button here. This is the approved plan for Blackman Farm. Again, just to remind you, it was basically, I think, 450 lots on roughly 150 acres there. That is the latest approved plan from which it's being built, and basically this reflects of how we want to add to it with the Hillwood portion of the PUD. Again, 219 lots were originally approved on this. We've done a little bit of reconfiguration of the original approved plan to accommodate basically your new subdivision regulations. We had to kind of consolidate the open space into one big area there to accommodate some of the new storm drainage regulations and water quality regulations, so we basically incorporated a little central park in there that consists of about four and a half acres. Overall, we still have four, five acres of open space in the development. This is going to be in the same HOA, same architectural control. As Margaret Ann said, the really kind of the two differences between Blackman Farm, the original section and this section is we're setting the garage back 35 foot and the 20 foot to accommodate two cars backing, you know, storage in the driveway, and then sidewalks are required on both sides of the streets under your new subdivision regulations. So those are kind of the main differences between the Blackman Farms community. But again, lots are the same width that was originally proposed. Actually, they're probably on the average a little bit larger because of that additional 35-foot setback that we had to do and had to increase the depth from what the typical Blackman Farm lot was in the original section. So that is our request tonight, and again, I'm happy to be here to answer any questions that you might have after your public hearing. And I do have Matthew Scrivener here as well with Polty Homes, if you have any questions of them.
Any questions for Mr. Caldwell? Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. If there's no questions, we'll open the public hearing at this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Anybody at all? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission?
If none, Chairman Lamb, I make a motion that we approve the zoning change request.
Second motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Moving on to item C, is a zoning ordinance amendment to amend the Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A, Chart 1, Uses, City of Murfreesboro and the Planning Staff is established. Ms. Ealy.
Thank you again. This next public hearing is the first of four public hearings that we'll be holding this evening regarding the medical zones in Murfreesboro. This public hearing will be to consider amendments to the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance, Chart 1, uses permitted. This chart outlines what uses are permitted and which zoning districts. The next three public hearings will be specifically to rezone some properties from their current CMR and CMRS8 zones to OGR. So this item, we're just considering some text amendments that staff is proposing. As the Planning Commission is well aware, planning staff has been studying the medical zones in Murfreesboro. The medical zones are CMR, CMRS8, and CM. The study was initiated by many, many responses that myself and my fellow planners have received from property owners who are concerned that the relocation of the MTMC campus to Medical Center Parkway is making it more and more difficult for them to lease the property that they own. We've gotten some reports that there's property that's remaining vacant for extended amounts of time, and we know from the studies that we've reviewed and the planning literature that we read that it's not good for any community to have vacant buildings. So staff's embarked on an adventure to study the area and propose what we think might be a good solution to this problem. To facilitate the zoning study, the planning staff did hold a public, or a neighborhood meeting. We had a roundtable neighborhood meeting on March 9th, 2010, at the Patterson Park Community Center. Many people showed up and were interested in what we're doing, and so that was a very well-attended event. Also, we've invited public comment for emails. Also, myself and some of our MIS staff set up a website where people could feel free to submit comments or reply to a questionnaire that Mr. Adalat and I put together. We didn't get very many responses from the website, however, we did get a lot of phone calls, a lot of opinions, a lot of ideas on what to do. So the first change that we're proposing is to amend the uses permitted for the OGR, which stands for General Office Residential District, in the zoning ordinance. And I wanted to read to you an excerpt from the zoning ordinance, which states what the purpose of the OGR zone is. It says, "The purpose of this district is intended to permit offices and associated administrative, executive, and professional uses and residential uses as specified institutional and limited retail commercial uses. Permitted offices may be located along highways, as identified in the Murfreesboro Major Thoroughfare Plan, as adopted, and may be amended from time to time and adjacent to commercial uses to act as a buffer between such routes and uses and residential uses. The provisions of this category contain regulations, standards, and procedures which are necessary and reasonable to preserve the character of the district, to guide growth and development, and to ensure harmonious development with other zoning districts." And the use regulations have two limits and conditions that apply to OGR zones. The first is that all operations and activities, except loading and unloading in connection with office building uses, shall be conducted within a completely enclosed building. And the second regulation is storage shall be contained within the principal building on the lot, so you can't have outdoor storage of material. So the following uses that I'm going to read are what we're requesting or we're proposing for you to consider adding to the OGR zone. If you do include these uses in the OGR zone, then the uses that are currently permitted in the medical zones would continue to be permitted. They are college or university, hospital, mental health facility, nursing home, antique shop less than 3,000 square feet, apothecary, which is pharmaceuticals only, book or card shop, catering establishment, health club, optical dispensary, pharmacies, reducing and weight control services. And then by special use permit, the planning staff is recommending group assembly of less than 250 persons and group of assembly of more than 250 persons be allowed with granting a special use permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals. After drafting these proposed changes, staff realized that we inadvertently left out laboratories, medical laboratories. It would be our recommendation that if you did want to approve this zoning ordinance amendment, that you add that use as a permitted use in the OGR zone. We do have a few medical laboratories in the CMR district, and we'd like for those to continue being permitted uses by right in those districts. So like I mentioned at the beginning, this is the first of four public hearings. This public hearing is just to consider the expanded uses or the additional uses that we want to include in the OGR zone. After this public hearing ends, the next public hearings will be to consider rezoning individual properties. So if you have any questions at this time or after the public hearing, Mr. Adalat and I are poised to answer them.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I want to make one point before we start the public hearing. This would be for the purpose of amending the OGR and the OG districts. It will not change the CMR or the CM districts. So the property where the hospital is at, which is zone CMR and CM, that zoning district would not change by virtue of this ordinance amendment.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Adalat. Any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Hi. My name is Steve Baughman. I live at 315 North Manny. I know this is an overall change, but one thing of this zoning change is the amount of people that you have on an event. You're zoning less than 250 and more than 250 people in that. And in this area, we went through this before with another business that moved into that area, and parking, event planning, all that, it really isn't suited for this particular area that's going to come down. So that particular part of this request for a change in the zoning, I'd like to have a take a look at and reexamine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baugh. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Questions for the Planning Commission?
Chairman Lamb, I think Mr. Baughman probably raises a pretty valid point, considering what we've gone through in this area and what Adam was talking about a few years ago. Mr. Adalat, can you talk to us a little bit about the assembly, how you come up with the 250 demarcation number, and if there are any safeguards in place for the special use permits in that regard?
Well, yes, sir, I can, and I may offer you some other thoughts as well. These categories are already in the zone ordinance, and they are already permitted in the CMR district. So all the property that is zoned CMR and CM in that area already allow a group assembly, whether it's less than 250 people or more than 250 people, by special use permit. So the property that's in the area around the hospital, the area around Dow Street, Highland Terrace, North Highland Avenue, you could already have that type of use, subject to approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. What we're proposing is to allow the same in the OGR and the OG districts. The safeguard is that we have this as a special permitted use, which would require approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals after it has a public hearing, and after we have a public hearing like tonight, where people would have an opportunity to offer testimony to the Board of Zoning Appeals about their concerns. The things that the Board of Zoning Appeals is going to look at is that the impact it'll have upon the neighborhood. We have two categories, because when you get more than 250 people, you've really got a much larger type of event. Something that might be a group assembly is something like Uncle Dave Makin' Days. That's a big event. That's on public property, so it doesn't have to go through a special use permit. So with something like a Jazz Fest, we've got several thousand people involved there. But it could also be a much smaller event, where someone has maybe a large fundraising event. We've had some of these out there in the area around the avenues, where people had borrowed some property to have an event for whatever purpose. We want to make sure that there's adequate facilities made for traffic. The board may require conditions like policemen to be hired for traffic control during the events. It may require that there be adequate facilities made for restrooms. If you're going to have people there for several hours, they may need to have accommodations made in that respect. The board has the ability to make special conditions as they find out from hearing testimony and the planning staff and other department heads identify them. Generally, these are not daily events. This is not like operating a business. These are usually special events that happen infrequently, and this is a category in our zone ordinance that allows us to have some oversight to keep them from just happening with no provisions made.
So in other words, this change approved would not allow a parcel to be converted into a banquet hall for regular, ongoing business use? It'd be a special event?
That would be a different category, and it'd be a different thing.
And each one of these will have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis by the Board of Zoning Appeals?
That's correct, and they would have the ability to hear, to review the uniqueness of that application, to see the conditions of the property, and then to apply conditions that would mitigate any adverse impacts that are identified.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If there's not any questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's not any questions, I would move for approval of the recommended.
Ms. Jones, may I ask for a clarification on your motion? We wanted to suggest that medical laboratories be included because that was inadvertent oversight, and I want to know if your motion would include that additional use?
Yes, sir. All staff comments.
All right. Thank you.
Motion is made and clarified. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next public hearing, item D, the zoning change request, which is Area 1, to rezone approximately 51.8 acres, 32 parcels, from CMR to OGR, located south of East Clark Boulevard and along Dow Street, Highland Terrace, and North Highland Avenue, City of Murfreesboro and the Planning Staff is established. Ms. Ealy.
Evening. Thank you. This is the first of the three public hearings that we are going to consider to rezone property from the medical zone to the office general residential district. The first map that I have on the screen shows the areas which we will be considering tonight. You'll see that there are three different colors. For reference purposes, we've divided and grouped the parcels into three groups, and so we'll have three public hearings. The first is for the purple area, which is, for the purple area, which we're calling Area 1. After this public hearing closes, our next public hearing will be for the orange area along Highland Avenue, which is Area 2. After the closure of that public hearing, we'll have a public hearing for the area shaded blue, which is the southernmost parcels. So the next map that I am showing you is an up-close map of the area which we're considering for this public hearing. This area consists of 32 parcels, and as you mentioned, they're located along the south side of East Clark Boulevard. They run along North Highland Avenue, Dow Street, Highland Terrace, and then there's one property on Leaf Avenue. The 32 parcels are currently zoned CMR, and the request is to rezone them to OGR, General Office Residential. If they are rezoned, then the uses that will be allowed in this area will be expanded. Currently, the medical district residential allows residential uses, and it allows commercial uses when they are directly related to medical uses. So the only types of offices that are currently allowed in this area would be a dental office or just any kind of medical office. If you do rezone these to OGR, then professional offices would also be allowed in this area, as well as some additional uses. So we've gotten a couple calls where somebody wanted to have a professional office, like an engineering firm there, and of course, the current zone does not permit that, and so we had to say absolutely not, that's not a permitted use. If you do decide to rezone these 32 properties, which total 51.8 acres, then an engineering office would be permitted in this orange area. The areas to the north are zoned for residential purposes. The Evergreen Cemetery borders this area, along the eastern and southern lot lines. To the east and west are also some single-family and multifamily housing. If you have any questions about this area, staff will be glad to answer them, either before or after the public hearing.
Ealy?
One question. Could you put the diagram, the purple diagram, back up for a second?
Sure. It's ready to go on the screen.
Okay. Is Mr. Hernandez the property he's referring to? Can you point out and tell us if it's part of this man?
I think he's on the next area or item D.
I'll show you where he is.
See him? Is he on?
Yeah.
Oh, my apologies. I was thinking he was on Lee.
I'll zoom in. How about that? If I can do it.
I'd be difty.
Awkward silence, huh?
Yeah. He's on Lee.
If you see, Leaf Avenue is, you'll see the one purple parcel that's on Leaf Avenue.
Right there.
Just south of that is a vacant parcel. Mr. Hernandez, on the phone this afternoon told me that that's the property that he owns, and so there's nothing on his property, and it's the one that's adjacent to that one parcel on Leaf Avenue.
The one just below that borders, right where it says RM16?
On the south side.
Mm-hmm.
That's the property that he indicated to me today that he owns. So if Mr. Hernandez is interested in speaking, when you open the public hearing, this may be the time that he'd like to stand up and say his name and give his address.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Ealy, be sure you point out that, can you mark that lot for us so we can make sure that everybody knows exactly which parcel we're talking about?
It's right there.
Can you see that hand? It's a white hand.
It's parallel with the RM16 lettering on the?
It is. That's right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Ealy. If there's no other questions, we'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Mr. Hernandez, this is your chance.
Well, I'm just going to repeat what I just said a while ago, and I apologize for not understanding this. this, even though it's clearly explained here, but I'm not familiar with all this.
We don't understand it either sometimes, Mr. Hernandez.
I'm sorry?
We don't understand it either sometimes, so it's okay.
Sorry, I apologize for my accent. All right, see, my property is right next following the shaded area on Leaf Avenue, and well, I'd just like to see if it can be included in the zoning for OGR or what is it?
Like my comment before, that's something I'd like to come up separately, and you'll need to talk to staff about that. You'll have to come up at another meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else care to speak?
Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, my name is Margray Thompson. I represent the property located 520 Highland Terrace. I know you're aware of that property that I own there has been vacant, about 10,000 square feet, for the last maybe 18 months. I've had churn down architects, CPAs, engineering firms, all sorts of great, great tenants. We've had that location about 25 years. My plan would be to remodel it to businesses that are very typical eight-to-five, like we've conducted ourselves in my previous business for 25 years. I've had a wonderful relationship in that neighborhood, and we enjoy that location. Can't do it. Medical profession has changed. There are very few, zero solo practitioners, people in solo practice. It just doesn't happen in medicine anymore. As we go forward with our changes in healthcare system, it's just financially and physically impossible. So I'm left with nobody except a group I've got there now, results, physiotherapy company, something like that, or medical laboratory, something group like that, might be a little bigger, but I have no phone calls from physicians at all, especially within the last 12 months. So anyway, I would appreciate if you consider what the planners have done researching. I think I talked to them last August or October or something like that. We've talked, had several conversations, and I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anybody else?
Hi again, my name is Steve Baughman. I just want to say thanks for doing it in this type of format as opposed to the other change that we did several years ago of just expanding the existing residential medical zoning to include other uses without any actual public hearings or inputs. And I want to say a special thanks to Ms. Ely for getting out the publications and all via email from other meetings, and I just appreciate the openness now that I see a change from the past. And I am generally for the overall change. I know, you know, a hospital's not going to be there. Who knows what's going to happen, but with other property owners, you know, my wife's worked on East Clark for a number of years, and it is a difficult situation for everyone involved, but generally, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Ball. Anybody else?
Yes, my name is John Cunningham. I have a office building located at 702 East Clark Boulevard, and I've rented out that building for a number of years, ever since about 93, and I would just like to say that I'm for this. I guess my property is the second property going back to the left from the corner there where the PCD development is.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Who would like to be next?
I'm Mary Merrill. I just live near here, and so I came to see what was going on for myself and my neighbors. And if I understand this correctly, these are just going to be rezoned for professional offices? Is that the change? So I can take this information back to my neighbors?
We'll have Mr. Haidalot expand upon that conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from members of the planning commission? Mr. Haidalot, would you like to add anything?
Yes, in response, or request, Ms. Merrill's request was, is this just for profession, to expand it to allow all types of professional offices? Well, the answer is that yes, it will include all types of professional offices, and even offices that may not be considered professional. For instance, it will include insurance agents as well as real estate agents, lawyers.
I know, you said those aren't professional.
Those are all.
I think you just used those not to do the softball, but this is what you did.
Out of order, Mr. Haidalot.
I intended to include planners, who you may not consider professional, but I do. So it would include all types of offices, and it could be pretty much, whether you would consider them licensed professionals or not.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Haidalot.
I think Chairman Lam can answer her.
Ms. Merrill, that answers your question, I'm not sure.
Office general means general offices, pretty much any kind of offices that are conducted indoors, not retail.
If you would like to state after the meeting, he'll be glad to go into great detail with you about that. Any other comments or questions? If not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, seeing no other comments, I recommend approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item E on the agenda is the zoning change request, Area 2, to rezone approximately 5.2 acres total, three parcels from CMRS8 to OGR, and 13 parcels from CMR to OGR located west of North Highland Avenue and south of Robert Street. Once again, the city of Murfreesboro, planning staff is staff. Ms. Ely?
Thank you. You may remember from the map that I showed you of the three areas, this is the area shaded orange. It's primarily located along North Highland Avenue, and the map shows you. There are 16 total parcels which we're considering rezoning from CMR and CMRS8 to OGR. The three properties on Robert Street are currently zoned CMRS8, and those are the only CMRS8 properties that we're considering this evening rezoning to OGR. And then the properties south of the heavy dash line are all zoned CMR, and their proposal is to rezone them to OGR. The Evergreen Cemetery is just across North Highland Avenue. To the north are the Oakland Ballfields, and just to the northwest is where the Oakland's Mansion is. The properties to the west are zoned CMRS8 and CMR. We're not proposing any change to those properties, just for the ones that are shaded in orange. The planning commission, or the planning staff recommends that you consider rezoning these properties for the very same reasons that we've been studying this evening, as part of the changes to the medical zone. If you have any questions about this before or after the public hearing, staff will be glad to answer them for you.
Okay. Any questions to Ms. Ely? Thank you, Ms. Ely. This time I'll open the public hearing for this section. Would anybody like to speak?
I can't help myself. Again, for the overall changes, my biggest concern is, a lot of these structures are too small to really house any kind of other businesses. They're, you know, 900 square feet, divided up, some of them are in very poor conditions. But what I'm really concerned about is, as they're torn down and made larger, another office use and all, that is put back in characteristics of what that neighborhood is. That was all part of the original Manny Avenue study, and part of that was making sure that the setbacks were allowed to where they are now. We've had a couple of other medical offices go in, and they've done the setbacks to where the parking's in the front, and it's beginning to change the whole characteristics of the neighborhood. So when we're rezoning this part to include offices, I'd like to at least make sure that it's in the characteristics of the neighborhood. And I know that's going to change, or require some change in your building codes that they can't adapt, but even on the next section, I'll get up and talk again, if that's allowed to happen. It's going to change the historic district there. It's not part of the Murfreesboro district, but it's the National Historic District, and that's a, to me, feel a key part of Murfreesboro. You know, that's the first subdivision of Murfreesboro. So anyway, just to have that a consideration when we're making these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Anybody else?
Richard Dillon, on several properties in two of these areas, and I think I'll just speak to this one. The first zoning, first hearing there was about property that's mostly medical. These next two are mostly residential, with medical increasing a little bit. First of all, I think we jumped the gun first time when we zoned it medical, because we didn't know what was going to happen, eventually happen. But I feel like we're doing the same thing again, because unless somebody knows something I don't, we don't know what's going to happen with a hospital property. So I don't know, I'm glad to hear what we amended, what we proved amended here tonight, because that does leave some medical in, because very realistically, that property may end up being some type of medical, so to just as zone it OG would have been terrible. My concern, I guess, too, is all of my properties are residential. I don't do commercial offices or anything. And we own several in there, and they're a part of our inventory that allows people to have single-family homes that can't afford to pay $1,000 a month. Most of our properties in that area rent for about $600, $650. It allows a segment of our population to live outside of apartments or duplexes or quads and enjoy single-family homes for something they can afford. And I kind of hate to see all of that area pushed into a commercial or even a medical office situation. Now, this area we're looking at right now, I probably only got one, I think, on Evergreen. The next area, I've got several more, but most of mine are back behind this, to the west of this. And of course, that's not on tonight's agenda, but I guess once we start, if first wave becomes offices in the press to move forward. But, you know, I hope that we, in our planning, that we would plan some to think about people that would like to stay in single, like to live in single-family homes, but can't afford the prices of most of what we have in our single-family market. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Anybody else? Nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Haidalot, you want to comment on any of Mr. Dillon's statements?
Yes, actually, both Mr. Dillon and Mr. Baughman bring up some interesting elements for discussion, and I think they are very relevant to what we're undertaking. This is an area that is dominated by, by single-family. However, there are two existing office buildings, and they would be on the two lots between Forest Street and Jackson Street, at the very south end of this area. And those offices have been constructed in about the last 10 years. So those are medical offices today, and they're begin, they may not yet be suffering from the problem. I think one of them is, because I did speak with one of the owners at our neighborhood meeting about the desire to see a broader range of uses. The rest of the parcels from Forest Street up to Robert Street are residential. They are not yet made into offices. The, one of the houses right there at the corner of Evergreen Street and Highland Avenue recently burned to the ground. It's a, it's corner lot, said to the ground, and there may have been some parts of it left standing, but it was a total loss. It's going to have to be removed if it hasn't been already. The situation is that several of those lots, particularly in the north end, are really too small for them to be rebuilt with offices by themselves. And much like the parcels to the south, between Forest and Jackson, those were several parcels, and the owners were able to assemble them into a large parcel to be able to build a building and to be able to build an adequate parking lot to meet it and to be able to landscape. And I think those two offices have actually become one nice additions to Highland Avenue. The remainder of the street, some of those houses are nicer than others, and I understand Mr. Dillon's concerns. Mr. Dillon has done a very admirable job of providing affordable housing in our community. It seems to be a niche that he does very well, and I can, I always admire his concern for the people who do business with him, because he has a genuine concern for their ability to have housing. And that's a little bit of what he's talking about tonight. He wants to make sure that that can continue. The change that we're talking about tonight really won't change that part of the zoning. This is, the OGR district is identical to the CMR district in terms of residential. You can continue to have single-family houses there. You can continue to have two-family houses, three-family houses, or four-family houses, depending upon the size of your lot. And the same regulations that apply in the CMR district will apply, already apply in the OGR district. So what you're doing is allowing those that are offices to have a broader range of office opportunities, those who want to remain residential, there's no change. Now, a little bit about Mr. Baughman's concerns, and also about Mr. Dillon's concerns, what about the remainder of the area and what's in the store for it? Well, I want to be cautious there. I have contemplated making a recommendation back to, on it separate, but I think it requires some additional study and maybe to be saved for a different day, because it will be a different conversation. There are no medical offices in a big part of that area, north of Jackson Street, over the Manny. And it may be that a residential-only classification is better for that area, that it should not be allowed to go to office after all. When we were looking at the hospital, which at that time had prospects for a lot of growth, by the time we studied that, we thought that maybe this area would be a good place for the expansion of the medical district. Well, we may, we may decide otherwise. And it looks like that the economies of the new medical campus on Medical Center and Parkway is going to change the prospects that looked one way in 2000 to something very different in 2010. So we're going to save that for another day. We'll return to it. We're not through with this area. Anything we do, we'll have public hearings, just like tonight, and hopefully, we'll have an opportunity for people to, who will come and help us. But as far as the properties that are in the area that's colored orange, we're just adding the opportunity for a broader range of office users, but the residential remains exactly the same. It's my hope that if we see a redevelopment, that there will be an assemblage of parcels to allow for adequate room for parking and buildings, but actually, it's not only my hope, without that, they won't be able to get permits or be able to get site plan approval.
Okay. Ely?
Mr. Haidalot, Mr. Baughman's other concern regarding how the layout of the property is, is it's redeveloped, parking in the front versus parking in the rear?
You know, that's, that's something that, there's a lot of debate on that subject in our literature of planners. There's one theory that says you ought to have your parking out front where people can see it, where it's convenient, put the building in behind, and that seems to be more of a suburban model. The other approach is to put the building as close to the street as it can functionally be placed, and then put the parking behind, place it back there where it's not visible from the street and put your building, and preferably put two-story and three-story buildings. I am absolutely convinced that with residential, that's really a much preferred model, particularly in a gridiron street setting like this is. But I'm not certain it is with offices. This Highland Avenue, and this is something we may even want to step back and think about. Highland Avenue is a street that has a special status in our community. It is a north-south street, but it goes right beside our cemetery. And whatever you may think about cemeteries, I think that is a very nice cemetery. It's a very meaningful part of our community. I want whatever surrounds it to contribute to it. Sometimes I wonder if we've been as successful with that as we should have been, if we could think about it with today's eyes, if we could go back 50 years and maybe have influenced some of the decisions we made without realizing the consequences. What do we want across the street? We've already got two nice office buildings. Do we want to see a continuation of that model? If we're all right with that, then tonight's approach is fine. If we want to say, no, we don't like that, and we want to step back and change this, then you might want to consider sending us back for more study and saying, all right, we may just need to change this to something else. My feeling is that I'm all right with Highland Avenue being a collector's street or sort of a sub arterial street in our community. And it may be best that we don't crowd it with buildings north of the hospital. I think north of Jackson Street is probably best to be a little bit different than south of Jackson Street. So that's what it's worth for me.
Any other questions? Now we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lam, I'll make a motion that we approve this zoning change request.
Chairman Lamb, I'll make a motion that we approve this zoning change request. Do you second?
I second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on to the final public hearing of the evening, that being a zoning change request for Area Three to rezone approximately eight point five acres containing twenty-nine parcels from CMR to OGR located west of North Highland Avenue and along Lee Street, North Manny Avenue, Bell Street, and East Burton Street. City of Murfreesboro planning staff, it's that. Ms. Ealy?
Chairman Lamb, planning commission members, this is the last of the four public hearings regarding the medical zones for this evening. This is to consider rezoning the area shaded blue on the map before you, which we refer to as Area Three. All these properties are currently zoned CMR, and the proposed change is to rezone them from CMR to OGR. There are twenty-nine parcels in this blue area, and they are located along Bell Street, East Burton Street, North Highland Avenue, Lee Street, and North Manny Avenue. The, primarily in this area are some medical office buildings and single-family residential properties, so it's a mixture of both types of uses. This is a recommendation on behalf of the planning staff in response to the effort we've made for considering changes to the medical zones and some rezonings. The planning commission should consider, or should conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning these eight point five acres from their current CMR zone to OGR. If you have any questions at this time or after the public hearing, we'd be glad to answer them for you.
Any questions to Ms. Ealy? Thank you, Ms. Ealy. I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak on this final public hearing. Mr. Boffman?
Again, my name's Steve Boffman, and I've always said that if I don't get my two cents worth, I can't really bitch about what happens, so. Again, I'm not opposed to changing it to offices, but again, this is a really critical part of Murfreesboro, the Manny Avenue section, north and south. Lot of history there. I'd hate to see things changed. There's several people that own several units altogether, and to allow historic homes and change it and do large setbacks like they did on Highland would totally change the characteristics of this old neighborhood, which is the first subdivision. It's put on the Murfreesboro website as one of the drawing points to Murfreesboro and the historic significance of it. So, I just want to make sure that, I don't know how you want to write it or put it in there, but that we keep the integrity of this old section of Murfreesboro intact, because I think it's important to, to Murfreesboro and all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Hello?
Hi.
Good evening. I'm the planning commission. My name is Lacy Noel Waikid, and living and owning property on East Lidle Street and owning property on East Burton Street adjacent to hospital property. And although it's not my nature, I shall try to be brief, if you all will. In reading over the material I've been able to put together in regard to the rezoning of the areas around the hospital, I see that a great deal of work and, and study has gone into this study. And while I'm probably, I don't have to say this next part, but well, I'm probably one of the oldest, as well as one of the longest-living residents of the area, having seen the area go from total residential to what we have today, that which, at what we are looking tonight, I see and visualize even more possible ideas for the area than what seems to be outlined thus far. As a child growing up in the area, I was only one of many, many children in the area. Today, there are limited numbers of children and families. And while that's okay, I would hope that none of the so far recommended and advanced ideas would discourage young people of today to come to the area and at least decide to return properties back to single-family dwellings, even as quote starter homes. Now, that's a term I've often seen in real estate ads of today. I'm reminded of what Franklin has done with some of its older neighborhoods, and I'll digress here just a moment, but I've driven through, through Franklin in an area that's very much like the Burton Street area and the Manny Avenue area, and the Bell Street area and those areas in the past. And now, they, I, what I see is that they are returning a lot of that to single-family homes and, and starter homes, because the buildings there are often small and, and they are varied throughout, but anyway. Another idea I don't see included in the list of possible changes is allowing for additional bread and breakfasts, or guest house, or tea rooms, et cetera. Burton Street and other streets could be beautifully developed along such lines. It might be called Murfreesboro's B&amp;B Avenue, because I see no reason not to have a B&amp;B next to a B&amp;B next to a, you know, what, if, if that's what people can do with their homes, then, you know, so be it. And I don't, you know, I don't think there's any problem there. But, well, so far as I know, we're still not getting any inclination as to what is to become of the hospital campus. Were it to remain a medical facility, people with family in the facility would have nearby places to stay for several days, or if a T room's available, places to have a nice lunch, et cetera. Additionally, people from the proposed offices of an OGR zoning would enjoy a tea room or so in the area. I've tried to be brief, but the foregoing is to say that there are many, many possibilities for the area, and I hope that you'll see your way to make as broad as possible the spectrum of uses for the area. Now, it's from listening to all you all tonight, I got the feeling that OGR can be very restrictive. It's, you know, and it's just off, it's office. Am I right about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Just office. But I think we need something more. And this, and, because I want, I'd like to see the, the nature of the area retained. I'd like to see it, well, I just think it could be a beautiful area, especially those, you know, Burton, Bell, and on up the street. So, that, those are my comments. Does anybody have any questions after me?
Thank you very much for your comments, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would anybody else care to speak? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Alott?
This area is certainly a different area than the other two we've talked about tonight. Manny Avenue is not really a major thoroughfare, nor is it really an arterial street, although it is a street of a lot of importance in our community. We've, we've discussed its importance as a street that connects basically the Oakland's Mansion to the Discovery Center, with huge potential for pedestrian use, particularly with a tourism aspect. And it is a, has a collection of homes on it that is really unique, a very nice street I enjoy driving in. On the other hand, Bell Street is important, but it's a different, it's a different street, particularly between Highland and Manny. It does have some existing offices along it, and those offices, for the most part, there are some exceptions, but for the most part, they were renovated, old houses, the houses that existed and, and made into medical offices. They're not as modernistic as, as some of the newer offices on, on Highland Avenue. In addition to the office uses, there are some retail uses that are permitted in the, both the commercial medical zone and the OG zone. For instance, a book and card shop is permitted, a flower and plant store, a specialty shop. And in, by reminder, a specialty shop is a shop that has a very narrow line of merchandise. When we talk about the uses permitted, I think that we have to be a little bit careful not to let the, the Oakland Pandora's box with this. There are some uses that just would not really be very appropriate in, in that area, and I think they would probably do harm if people tried to fit them in there. The market may never really encourage them, but the zoning certainly doesn't need to open them up either. So, some of the more heavy commercial, and, and I don't think Ms. Waikid really was thinking about things like automobile repair, but I do think she may have been thinking about restaurants, which might be a nice addition, but it seems to be a little bit difficult. One of the most interesting places I've been to in Nashville is a place called Manel's. But, but the problem with Manel's is, everybody likes to visit it, but nobody wants it next door to them. It's, it's a nice place to eat lunch, but when you go there to park, you've got a park on the street in front of somebody's house. So, I've always discouraged that that type of use in this location, in this kind of area, because I think it would be, it could be harmful. Again, back to Mr. Boffman's comments, if the planning commission feels that we need to be looking at a different model on the zone, we, we may need to do that. But right now, I want to come back to it, the bulk regulations in terms of setbacks, structure placement, height, and commercial medical and in office general are almost identical. The uses that are permitted in the office general and commercial medical will almost be identical in the two zones after the amendments we, we recommend tonight, except offices in the CM zone are limited to medical professionals. Offices in the OG zone are not limited.
Mr. Ealy?
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Mr. Alott, Ms. Waikid and I had spoken a few weeks ago about some of the issues that she brought up after we, last time we discussed this at a work session. And I think she does make a valid point about the potential of the bed and breakfast type or tea room type allowances, because if you have the, the old hospital, eventually, perhaps if it, if it went toward the concept of a nursing home or an assisted living facility, some of the facilities like she's talking about would probably be very appropriate for out-of-town family members who are coming to visit and, and see relatives who are in that situation. Is, is there anything that would allow us to, to make allowance for those types of things?
Well, a bed and breakfast or a bed and breakfast den or bed and, let me look at my list here. A, back here, I was looking at earlier, a bed and breakfast homestay and bed and breakfast den, that's the two classifications, and the difference is the intensity. The bed and breakfast den is a little bit bigger. Both of those are permitted in the, make sure I got my line here, I got to look at my chart. Let me look here, I'm just going to get myself a little bit in. Both of them are permitted in the OGR district and in the CMR district. So, that's not changing. Now, now, we do have some limitations, and, and those are required by special use permit for the, in these, in both of these zones. And the BZI has some standards, and, and one of them is, when we, when we adopted those into our zone ordinance, we looked at the state model, the way the state said it would be done. You want to have them in a, a house that has some historical value. You also want to put a separation between them, so you, so you keep every house from having a bed and breakfast in it, which can become quite of a, a big impact, because the, the quaint occasional visitor parking on the street is, is probably no problem. But if everybody is, is filled up with, they begin to create a problem. Also, it, it creates a little bit of more competitiveness. If you, if you have a whole street, well, it becomes a, well, maybe, maybe that's not such a good idea. And those that are operated, maybe, it may be a different kind of competition. Bed and breakfast aren't intended to be a hotel. It's not what a, there ought to be something special about bed and breakfast. It makes it a, it makes for the person who's staying there to have a more unique and enjoyable experience, as well as the neighborhood. The planning commission could ask us to study that some more if you wanted to. A tea room is, is basically a restaurant, from my understanding. It's, it may have a very limited line of food, but it's basically a restaurant. Typically, it's more than just tea, it has the, maybe some breads or cookies or muffins or whatever it is that specializes at that particular tea room.
Okay. So, the bed and breakfast by request of the Board of Zoning Appeals can be allowed in what this is being zoned to and currently what it is?
That's right.
So, that, that answers that. As to the tea room situation, you know, when I think of that term, I don't necessarily think of a full-blown restaurant or even a luncheonette counter or anything like that. I'm, I'm fine with us going here with this as is tonight, but perhaps if staff could look at some areas surrounding communities that have facilities that are, call themselves specifically the category of tea room or, or something like that, and see if there's some additional classification we can come up with that delineates those types of facilities from how we define restaurant, perhaps?
Mr. Ealy, I'd be very glad to. At our next planning commission meeting, maybe we can have a staff report, and it may be that we want to make some additional amendments to our, to our ordinance, to allow them, something like that. But I think we need to have a chance to do a little research and seeing how we would, we would incorporate them in. I, you know, there's something quaint about the idea of tea room, and, and I remember my grandmother used to visit someplace in, in Centerville that was like, what she called a tea room with her, and often they would play cards, and it was a very sociable thing, and she enjoyed it immensely. And I never went there. I was a, I was a dirty little boy, I guess, and I didn't belong in such a place. But I, I think if we could replicate what was, she was experiencing in our community, it could be something very special, and if we could let people operate something like that, what I'm thinking of, and to see, apparently, you have something in your mind, too. So, I want to do some research. I also want to find out what is in the planning commission members' minds, so we can come back with some study, if that's what you'd like.
And I think when you're talking, you're probably on the same page, and there may be some other areas of the community that would be ideally suited for, for that type of establishment, too.
Well, the kind of thing I'm thinking, it may be that the, the place where our existing OGR district is, particularly Maple Street, that could have some very charming places. Again, it's kind of like the bed and breakfast. The ambiance is important. You, you're not going to find a, a tea room as attractive in a place like the, the Kmart Center, because it's a different environment. It doesn't, it doesn't have the ambiance. But over in this kind of, an older house, may very well be very adaptable, too.
Well, you know, just like a hotel and a bed and breakfast, you both pay to spend the night there and sleep there, but I think of those as two totally different things, and I think our zoning ordinance looks at those as two totally different things, and perhaps another distinction can be made in, in this arena as well.
We'll endeavor to research that. We'll leave them to report back at a future planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
So, so, Mr. Alott, I have question, would you, tea room, bed and breakfast, is there a separation of tea room to restaurant based upon square footage?
Mr. Clark, I don't know yet. That's part of what we can do, is part of our research, because I, from what I understand about tea room right now, and, and again, it's, it's limited, because I want to check some other communities and see how they can be approached, and see what we might be to do, actually, get more into your all's minds. But it's basically a restaurant. It may be a limited menu, but it's still a restaurant, like a Starbucks, it's a coffee shop, and it's, you don't think of it as a McDonald's, you don't think of it as Starbucks, but yet it has a lot of the same impacts. It has a drive-up window, but you don't think of Starbucks as a fast-food restaurant, but yet it has the same impacts as a McDonald's in terms of traffic, utilities, and their main beverage is coffee.
Chairman Lamb, I did some preliminary research.
We're not ready for that research tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Beale. Any other questions? If there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman, I move for approval, subject to all staff comment.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That concludes the public hearings tonight. I want to, Mr. Ailot, I want to commend you and your staff. I think y'all did a lot of work on this Manny Avenue, North Highland area, and you went above and beyond the attempt to give public comment and public input on your recommendations and the public meeting that you had, and solicitation to the public for general comments. I think, you know, you did a lot of work on it, and I want to commend all of you for the great job you did on it.
Chairman Lamb, I did want to tell you that Ms. Beale has been the major staff person who has worked on this. She's not through, she still has worked on tea rooms. But she has done a lot of work on this, and I'm real proud of her, because she has spent, she has, she's just done a really good job of trying to incorporate the public comments, thoughts, trying to do her research in a way that would make this work real well. I'm real proud of her, and I want you to know that she's the one who's carried the banner.
Thank you, Mr. Ailot. We'll move on to Plats and Plans now. We have three items under that section. The first of which is East Main Village, Lot 2, Phase 1. It's a final plat for five lots on .214 acres, Zone PRD, located along East Main Street. Regent East Main LLC is the developer. Ms. Logan, good evening.
Good evening, thank you Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. And this first plat before you tonight is for a residential townhome unit. It'll be the first five residential unit lots. They'll be on individual lots of record, although it appears a multifamily building, located at the southeast corner of Middle Tennessee Boulevard in Maine. If you've been by there recently, you may have seen the commercial portion of the building going up. I think they're working, they're working with staff right now on their final brick selections to get that finalized, and this will be, they want to continue on with the project by constructing the first portion of their residential units, and this plat is a requirement for them to proceed forward. Thank you. The plat is in good order.
Okay, are there any questions from Ms. Logan for this? If there's no questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval, subject to all staff comment.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next item is The Villages at Fox Creek, which is FKA Fox Creek, Section 2. Final plat for 27 lots on 9.07 acres, Zone RS12, located along Bradable Pike. Borough Building Group is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir, thank you. And we have a copy of the final plat available that we could put on the screen. And this final plat is located on the western portion of Bradable Pike, just south of the intersection with South Rutherford Boulevard. And this is a continuation of an existing subdivision, wanting to create 27 lots on 9.07 acres, but they will, it will be under a new developer, and that is why it's coming in tonight under the name of The Villages at Fox Creek. Previously, you saw the preliminary plat for this as the Fox Creek, Section 2. And I want to tell you to, just remind you that this property is Zoned RS12. It's a straight-zone subdivision, and it's not a planned development. Staff did not have an opportunity, and under law cannot have an opportunity to review housing plans or anything associated with this plat. And in terms of the plat itself, staff does have a couple of concerns relative to the reserved parcel that you'll see located on the left side of the plat on your paper. Staff has been working with the surveyor on that. One of our concerns is that with this plat, that we will essentially be land-locking one of those parcels there to the left, that would, by the recording of this plat, create an illegal subdivision, which is not permitted, of course. They do own property to the south and can combine those two properties together, and then have a southern entrance, which would allow it access to a public roadway. But we really want to make sure to encourage them that they have to combine those lots. We need to see a separate plat combining those lots as we move forward, and we would like to see that happen before this plat is signed or recorded. In addition, there's some utility concerns and connections that we need to review for that larger lot, and we want to review that on a preliminary plat. We have not seen a revised preliminary plat. This came into us as a final plat, and it's been several years since that preliminary plat was approved. Of course, we're glad to see some new subdivision activity occurring, but we do want to have an opportunity to review that revised preliminary plat again before this plat is signed and recorded, from a staff level. Also, we have a little bit of concern about the property line between those two parcels to the left that are noted as preservation area, reserved for future development. And we have asked the surveyor to research those deeds, because where he's showing that property line, and where RGIS maps show that property line, do not match. So we want to make sure that those do match, and that the plat is accurate, again, before it's signed and recorded, and the surveyor is aware of that concern. Finally, we also show an area there that is labeled as preservation area, reserved for future development. We feel like that the developer that is doing this plat does not own that property next to it, but he bought, the developers of this current section purchased the property from the people who own that reserved parcel. They're not sure at this time what they want to do with it. We've heard that they might want to build a dream home back there, make it one lot. We've heard all kinds of things. It really might become a preservation area with a walking trail. It might become additional development. We feel that it's kind of confusing the way it's listed on the plat, and that it needs to just be shown as a reserved parcel for future development on the plat with the preservation part removed. Because when you show it as a preservation area, that invokes in people's minds that it is going to be preserved for something, and then there comes a question of, who's going to maintain that? Is there going to be a homeowners association? How is that going to be preserved for the future as we go forward? So that's another thing that we want clarified on the final plat before we sign and record that final plat. I think that that's the majority of our comments, as you note, that we have, we have several concerns. We're not against, of course, the approval tonight, as long as those concerns are so noted in our record, and that we do have all of that ironed out and worked out with staff before any plats are signed and recorded. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Before I open discussion on this, I want to declare a conflict of interest on this on my part. One of the agents in my company is working with this developer to market these properties, so I will not vote on this matter, and I will not participate in the conversation pertaining to it. I will go ahead and conduct the meeting, since my vice-chairman, Mr. Young, was not able to join us tonight. With all that being said, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Logan?
No questions, Chairman.
Yes.
Ms. Logan, I still don't understand about this little, what looks like access in the little, what is that kind of area, to that parcel? Is that access, or it looks like it's not landlocked if we have that little?
It is access, but the parcel directly beneath it, because those are actually two parcels, would be landlocked.
So there's no, down here?
Yes, that's right. And so that's the parcel that we're concerned of, that would be created illegally, because it would, until those two parcels are combined, then it wouldn't, the southern portion, the southern lot, wouldn't have access to a public roadway. And that's a concern for us.
Ms. Logan, oh, what lot numbers are those? Forty-seven, forty-eight?
There's not a lot number listed, it's that reserved parcel, and then the access that's shown between lots 53 and 54.
Okay.
So can you record this plat without making that illegal?
No, no. That's one of our conditions.
Oh, it has to be this?
They have to resolve it somehow. Then, you know, they have to find a way to resolve it, whether they find another point of access, or whether we record a separate plat. That's something that they have to resolve with us before we record this plat.
Okay.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval, subject to all staff comment, both written and oral.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have one abstention, which would be myself.
Thank you.
Then we have one final item under Plats and Plans tonight, last but not least. We have a request to move a house from 3239 Memorial Boulevard to 358 Dejarnet Lane, George W. Lamb's applicant. Ms. Logan?
It's me again, Margaret. Okay. Public Chapter 246 of 2007 requires that certain conditions be met before a house can be moved within Marcusboro City limits. And in this situation, it mandates the Planning Commission's approval. The law requires that the Planning Commission consider the following requirements before rendering decision. The first requirement is that the age of the house to be moved must be within 10 years of the average age of existing structures within the developed area. The second condition is that the value of the house to be moved, after all the improvements have been made, must meet or exceed the average appraised value of existing structures within that developed area. The third condition is that the size of the house to be moved must be not less than 100 square feet than the average size of existing structures within the developed area. And the fourth and last condition is that the appearance of the house to be moved must be consistent with that of those existing residents as determined by the Planning Commission. So the applicant, Mr. George Lamb, is here this evening, and he is purchasing a house located at 3239 Memorial Boulevard. This house and property is currently owned by Lisa Haynes, and the map that is on the screen shows a little red house with the label 3239 Memorial Boulevard. That's where the house currently is located. Mr. Lamb is interested in purchasing Lot 43 in the North Spring, Section 2 subdivision. And if you refer to the map, you can see the second little red house that says 358 Dejarnet Lane. That's where Mr. Lamb would like to move that existing structure. Of course, before he can do anything of the such, you have to approve this request. The applicant has stated that he will not need to apply for the BZA for any variances. He says that his house can meet the setback requirements in that existing building envelope. Both properties are Zoned RS15, which is a single-family residential district. It's also important for you to realize that any improvements that need to be made to the property must be made within one year of the permit being pulled to move the house. He's, if you do approve this request, Mr. Lamb will contact the Building Codes Department and get a substandard inspection made of the house, because the city won't allow a substandard house to be moved within the city of Marcusboro. If there are any violations, then he'll just be required to bring it up to current code. Currently, in his application, Mr. Lamb has committed to making the following improvements to the house if you let him move it to the slot. The first is to replace the roof and gutters as needed, to paint the interior, to rewire the electricity in the house, to add landscaping, to place an asphalt driveway with a turnaround so that they won't have to back onto Dejarnet Lane, to reconvert the garage into a rear-loaded two-car garage. Currently, the house has a garage that had been converted into what I think he referred to as a party room. He's going to take that and turn it back into a garage so that there will be a two-car garage available for this new house. He'll pour a new foundation and replace the bricks and block for this new house. And the brick style, he is going to choose a more modern brick style, because the pattern that's currently on the house, that you can see from the photograph, is a more dated brick, from when the house was built. I've provided information in your staff comments about the value of the house, the square footage of the house, the age of the existing structures. It is up to you to determine if this house is appropriate for the proposed location. On the screen, I have a photograph of the house at 3239 Memorial Boulevard, and it's also in your agenda materials, so there's a photograph of the house. Next, I'm going to, these are some photographs of the rear of the house. I would like to note that the detached garage, pool, and pool house, which has now been destroyed, will not be moving with the property, those are just remaining. He's just requesting to actually move the physical house. This is an ortho photograph showing the lot. It's 358, it's 358 Dejarnet Lane where he would like to move the property. This is a photograph of the vacant lot where he would like the house to be moved. And then these are photographs of some adjacent houses. You have any questions regarding this application? Mr. Lamb is anxious to answer them for you. Staff is available to answer them as well. But the Planning Commission should consider this request to move the house, and determine if the house is consistent with the neighborhood. If approved, I recommend that you place conditions on approval, that all the necessaries required to bring it up to current code and up to the valuation of $194,000 be made within a year, and that that will increase the value. And then, that the Planning Commission may also want to require the applicant to use a surveyor that lay out the footing of the building, and to provide a surveyor certificate as validation that this property will not be in violation of any of our zoning codes, and it will meet minimum building setbacks. So if you have any questions at this time, I'd like to answer them, or Mr. Lamb.
Questions? Mr. Lamb, did you have anything you'd like to say?
I've not had the opportunity to be at the commission meeting in a long time, but I'm impressed, and I appreciate if you'll consider allowing me to move this house. It's nine-tenths of a mile from its present location, and it can be moved in its entirety, 107 foot long and a maximum width of 58 foot. So it'll be sort of a new thing for our community to move that larger house in one piece. Anyway, I appreciate you all considering that request.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from members of the Planning Commission? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, if there are no other questions or comments, I would move for approval, subject to all staff comment. And I'd like to know when you do this, I'd like to watch.
He told me he moves it in the middle of the night. What time?
Usually after midnight.
After midnight, so be prepared to have your coffee.
Mr. Lamb, you don't stay up that late, do you?
No.
I don't stay up that late to watch this, huh?
Oh, my goodness.
I second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the Plats and Plans portion of our agenda. Mr. Ailot's favorite portion, staff reports and other business. Mr. Ailot, do you have any further business?
Yes, sir, I do. I have something I need to discuss in terms of staff reports. I want to hand out to you quickly a illustration to help in my discussion. And Ms. Beale, go ahead and put the map up.
It's ready.
We have, what you have is a area photograph of our downtown, and the area that's colored green shows the sidewalks. What you can't see is the, those little red numbers, or those little red circles are the width of the sidewalks. The reason I'm bringing this to you tonight is that we are having some property owners who own property in the downtown, who are interested in having the opportunity to have outside dining, also taking place some tables on the public, or on the street, on the sidewalk adjacent to their buildings, to be able to serve meals and beverages for their customers. They feel that the ambiance would be very appropriate and contribute a whole lot to the downtown. This is something that's, from time to time, has been discussed with staff. Actually, after I was reminded today, I found that I was probably supposed to have made a staff report to you sooner. And so I can't fault anybody but myself for not having brought it to you sooner. One, I'm also got here with you tonight, is an illustration. And a couple of, well, actually, several months ago now, I've discussed this with my friend, Mr. Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith, and he saw the situation. He was very pleased to be able to just provide some measurements and a drawing real quickly to give you an idea graphically of what could be done. And you'll see in the top of the page, you'll see a, what is a five-foot for what could be a furniture zone, and still leave a five-foot area for an unobstructed pedestrian path. And then see how, see how a car would park with this. And the second view, which is below that, shows you how a car would be placed there. There are a lot of challenges in the downtown to being able to place this. There are issues that are a little bit uncommon. For instance, how would they be regulated? How do we keep the, those who do good, allow them to do good, and those who do poorly, and perform poorly, how do we make sure that they get back in line and do it right? These are public sidewalks, so we have to be real careful about public safety and liability. There are ADA issues. The Americans with Disabilities Act, want to make sure that handicapped people have free access to these, through these areas. There's issues about smoking in the public sidewalk, or such. So there are some issues that need to be investigated before we're comfortable with making a recommendation. One approach to this would be a permit system, where you would issue a permit for someone to be able to do this. Another would be basically a license system. There are some very important distinctions to this about how this could be revoked. And I think that's something our legal department would have to weigh in on and be able to advise you on. We have done some initial research, and there's different approaches in different communities. But different communities are built different than our community, and we've got to make sure that we have looked at what works for us. Certainly, we want to make sure that our downtown is a very pleasant place. I find our downtown to be a very, I'm on the Main Street Board of Directors, and I am so proud of our downtown, because when I'm down there, I find it to be a place that's very pleasant, and a place that people want to be. We don't want to lose that. So we have some issues that we need to investigate before we made a recommendation to you. Tonight, my purpose is to introduce you to the subject, so that you know that we're looking looking at it, and maybe, uh, gauge your interest, are you all, as a Plan Commission, interested in the staff pursuing this? Now, interestingly, this will not likely be a zoning issue, this may simply be a recommendation for an ordinance to the City Council, uh, for a, something in our city code. Uh, however, often with these sort of things, because it, there is, uh, a little bit, uh, unclear, it's not clear in the law about how we should go about adopting and getting public, but we may want to have a public hearing on this, we may want to enlist the Main Street Board of Directors to maybe give us some thoughts on it. So, uh, we, we may charge some, uh, unusual territory as we, as we undertake this. Certainly, we want to have some input from the people who are affected. Uh, Mr. Gill, I think you are a downtown, uh, business or person, and you may want to have an interest in this that's unique, uh, not only as a person who works there, but also what might be your next-door neighbor's, uh, business. Uh, and, and I use you as an example, because there's many of them around the downtown. Uh, so, I, I bring it to you again, not for action, but really for an idea to gauge your all's interest in this as a group, and not only me, Mr., uh, well, I guess there's several of you all who have downtown connections, Mr. Calburton, Mr. Wilson, as well.
Mr. Ailat, I, I think it's an excellent idea, and I think it definitely needs to be studied, and I know we've struggled with some of this in the past, as far as what was appropriate and what is allowable, so we need to, uh, we need to look into it in detail, and get public input, and, uh, come up with a proposal that would be adequate for the community.
I agree.
I agree, 100%.
Yeah, I think, I think if done right, it, it would be a great asset, uh, downtown.
Well, it seems like there's enthusiastic support for us to do this, so, uh, we will endeavor to have a report, hopefully, it may be even at our next Plan Commission meeting, which will work session, and we just may have to do a, um, a, um, field trip, to be able to see what we're talking about.
Uh, we get continuing credit today?
Yes, sir, if we do a field trip, and it's educational, you will get, uh, continuing credits.
We really might consider going to Paris, France, and studying how they do it there.
I, I really had more in mind that you might walk around the square.
Thank you, Mr. Ailat.
We will, we will let you know, uh, prior to the next meeting, if you need to wear your walking shoes for, for that one.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other business, Mr. Ailat?
Uh, I did want to say that we had, uh, a very, very good and interesting, um, uh, training session, the teleconference the other day, about the variances, the set, the, uh, special uses, and site plan review. Uh, some of you all were able to join us, too bad for the rest of you, because it was, it was a good session, and I thought it was very interesting.
Sometimes you have several lawyers discussing something like that, always very interesting. I, I would like you to have coffee at the next one.
Well, I didn't see you nodding off Chairman Lamb, so I thought you were very interested.
Any other business, Mr. Ailat?
Yes.
In that case, we want to wish Mr. Young, in case he's watching in, uh, he's convalescing tonight, cannot make the meeting, so I want to wish him a speedy recovery, and hopefully he'll be back and ready for your, uh, tour of the square, if we do so, at this time. So, all that being said, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and we'll conclude the meeting with adjournment.